Mike's on the phone, Dan's on.
Got everybody but you, huh? Is he coming?
Yeah, I'll message him real quick. Probably forgot. All right, it's seven o'clock, we will go ahead and get started. So, as in meetings past, due to Governor Inglis' rulings of the stay at home, stay safe, we're doing these meetings remotely. I don't have my normal scripts, so I'm going off memory. So, in the room today, we have Katie Ellen, our city administrator, RJ Stevenson, I almost said Keach, that was a buddy from college, RJ Stevenson, head of finance, and Todd with IT. And Lisa is on, Dan Dunn is on. So, invocation real quick, pledge allegiance, and then we'll do a roll call.
Sounds great.
All right, God our Father, I thank you for everything that you provide for us each and every day. I also you watch over those during this very difficult time. Please guide those and bless those that are taking care of us each and every day, from first responders to the grocery store workers, everybody who's kind of on the front line, making sure we get those essential needs met. I also want to ask that you watch over our community, help keep us healthy and safe, and that you guide our city council and staff to make the best decisions possible. In due time.
Amen.
All right, we'll do a pledge allegiance.
A pledge and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all.
I almost forget the words when it starts echoing. Okay, roll call. Chris Kamiskas.
Here.
Phil Foyer.
Here.
Annie Kurtz. Dan Dunn.
Good afternoon.
Odin Langford. Mike Kennedy.
Present.
And Hugh Severs. Hearing Hugh, can I get a motion to excuse you? And I don't know what the reason is.
At this point, I would make a motion to excuse Hugh under the circumstances.
Second.
Would there be an emergency meeting? Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Aaron and Annie, I've had it. Okay, agenda approval, Mayor Protem.
I recommend we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Langford, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. This is one of the first opportunities for any citizen comments. We still need to have those, or make the opportunity to have those. Actually, there's a couple people on, from a citizen's standpoint. If you do have a comment as a citizen and you'd like to make one, you can hit the chat button. Give that a second. Not seeing any, there will be another opportunity at the end, if you have any comments to make. Okay, action items. Councilmember Kennedy, do you have it in front of you?
Mayor, if I might, like to take Action Item 7A, approve the interagency agreement and authorize the agreement when approved as deformed by the city attorney.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Actually, let's do discussion, sorry, I got ahead of myself. Let's have a discussion, folks. Okay, you guys have all had a chance to look at the information at some point. We're gonna have RJ talk a little bit about it, in case there's any, for Sean, whoever, I don't even know Sean's on.
I'm here.
Okay.
He's here. So, the agreement comes from Department of Commerce, it is federal, it is federal funds, part of the parade act grant, so we do have to report it as federal, just for reporting purposes. This is more from, we do our annual report, it doesn't exceed a certain dollar amount, so about a, if we were over three quarters of $9,000, we have that situation here. The allocation's $330,000, there's procedures in place to get reimbursed for it, it has cost reimbursement, and we're getting those mechanisms in place for the Department of Commerce, but the first step was to get the interagency agreement approved, signed by the city and then signed by Commerce.
Is there any questions on this?
Yes.
I'd like to add, one of the reasons that we had this special meeting is it is time sensitive, and so, we can go back, I think, to March 20th, they're about to be reimbursed, but going forward, the reimbursement is described to end by the, by the last day in October.
Councilmember Langford.
I was just gonna say, sir, that the audio was a little bit hard to understand with everything that RJ said. So, this is a federal government, and the interlocal would be between us and them.
The interlo-, the interagency agreement is with us and the Washington State Department of Commerce. The source of the funding does come from the federal government, the Department of Commerce is there, I would call them the gatekeepers.
Yes.
Of the fund.
Thank you for that. Who determined our portion?
That was based on a formula.
Per capita.
Per capita. So, at first round, we saw that the large counties in Washington, and a couple of larger cities, got relief funding, and then, for the, all the other cities in there, they looked at a per capita base with a minimum of $25,000.
So, so, in essence, we talked a little bit, Councilmember Langford, about the dollars the county was getting, distributed by the feds. These are separate dollars that are allocated to cities within that county. So, the county got, Spokane County got $91 million. The county is gonna be responsible with some input from the mayors on how it is spent. A lot of it's gonna be going toward the COVID expenses on a county level. These dollars are specifically allocated to the city, in the sum of $330,000. There's a very, very specific criteria on how those dollars can be utilized, and we can discuss some of those.
Thank you for answering, but yes, I would like to hear some of the focus points.
Yep. Councilmember Kurtz.
I had a question about, I see how we want to use the funds as far as being able to purchase PPE and distribute those to local businesses, but when I look at the six different categories, I don't see which area that would fall under, because I see where you can buy PPE, but those are more for police officers, child protection, I mean, it had some very specific criteria in there, so which category would we be using it the way that we're proposing?
Number six.
So, if you look at attachment A, I think it's like on page 12, there's any other COVID-19 related expenses reasonably necessary to the function of government that satisfies the fund eligibility to require criteria. And in talking with Commerce over the last couple weeks, and we've been involved in a couple webinars, they're really looking for the local agencies to make some determination of what they believe is reasonable, necessary.
Okay.
And if there's another top, there's another comment in the test, and you're saying there's a test, there's like five situations, and one of them talks about being a necessary expense. So, what Commerce is saying, there is some latitude that the local governments can take to determine what's necessary for their own jurisdiction. And so, what we're trying to determine here is, we believe there's a need for public safety when it comes to opening up these businesses, when it comes to keeping not only the rest or the business itself safe, but also the deaths of the citizens that visit them, that they have all the opportunities for that. The Attorney General did a release of memorandum back in March, back in March, talking about how public funds can be used, and the Attorney General's opinion is that there is a role for local governments to protect public health without, protect public health as, without question, a purpose of government. So, we're looking, when I look at helping these businesses, is that number six statement of making that policy statement from a local level of how we're going to keep our community safe.
Okay, thank you.
So, to dive into this a little bit deeper, might turn my mic on, there, then I hope.
Yes.
One of the things that we obviously look at first, are the expenses the city has accrued to respond to COVID. Those include things like cleaning supplies, being able to, anything that wasn't in the budget, to include getting supplies and materials for people to work from home, like computers, if we needed different types of tools to expand our abilities within our city council chambers, to spread people out further, when, once we do get back to having normal council meetings. Also, we were going to be utilizing those dollars to hire a couple staff members to, because this isn't going away anytime soon, to go around to our facilities on a regular basis throughout the day, and their sole job is to make sure that things are cleaned on a regular basis. One of those individuals that we hired, he had worked on Jen's crew before, on a seasonal level, and he was more than happy to assist, and he's been helping out and cleaning things around the city, within our city facilities, police department, library, city hall, things like that. And then, when we start to look at the dollars, we also looked at, to RJ's point, utilizing some of those dollars, which we did a great deal of research to make sure that it was okay to do, to utilize dollars to purchase things like masks, sanitation materials, sanitary materials, hand sanitizer, gloves, for the purpose of the businesses being able to open their doors up, because part of their criteria was that they have to have certain things in place before they start going. And knowing how many challenges there were with local, or with doctors, offices, and even hospitals to get PPE gear, you can only imagine how difficult it is for a small local business that's been closed for two months, to try to find those supplies. So, this was to help make sure that those businesses are opening, to be following. So, as an example, if a business, and they have proved that they're a business in the city through their business license, and we're going to disperse the supplies based off a number of employees, but we're gonna cap it at 20, so. Hundred staff members or more.
Maybe somebody could mute.
Yeah.
Yeah. Somebody that has like a hundred staff members or more, that have been open for a while, couldn't necessarily come and get those supplies for all hundred staff, we would limit it at 20 to start out, so we don't burn through the supplies quickly. Looking at the requirements on how these dollars can be utilized, at the same time, we want to make sure and utilize them to the best of our abilities, and knowing all the restrictions that are in place, felt this, this was definitely one of those areas. And we've already done some projections, the calculations, and even if we were to hire these two staff, get all of our reimbursements for the things that we've had to do as a city in response to COVID, along with these supplies, we're not even at a fourth of the total. Understand that these dollars cannot be utilized for anything, A, that was already in the budget, B, anybody that was already planned on being hired prior to COVID, and, or C, for financial loss. So, those are some of the main areas, you might think, oh, it'd be great to use this for the sales tax revenue that we've lost, it can be used, can be used for that.
Mr. Mayor, got a question for RJ?
Yes, Councilmember Dunn.
Hey, RJ, it looks like you read through what the reimbursement procedures. How frequently do we seek reimbursement under the contract? How, how often?
From my understanding, once we're up and running, we submit invoices, and it doesn't, we can do it on a daily, weekly basis. It's gonna be, it's gonna depend on our frequency.
That, that's all I was checking on, is this isn't a cash flow issue for us in terms of the expense and its lag reimbursement? You feel pretty comfortable about the frequency with which we can draw?
Yes, once we get, and, and once we get the contract finalized, we'll work on our first draw, which would include items like sectioning off the parks and sending them in, that kind that we've already spent working on that, those projects, and what the cleaning supplies that we've had by first day. So, we already got a, a little bit of a backlog that we're ready to send an invoice to them for.
Yeah, we've, we've been keeping a running list of every, everything COVID-related financially.
Great, I'm just checking with burden to staff regarding the additional activity and the reimbursement that isn't undue or requires additional significant effort on our part to compile these reimbursements, and that cash flow wise, it's on a frequency level that we feel comfortable with. So, thanks.
RJ?
Yes, Councilmember Foyer.
Yeah. Hey, RJ, I thought I read, as I was going through this, that you could expect a 30-day reimbursement window. Did you read that?
Yeah, I did read that. I think, once they're up and running, talking with, with Commerce, that gives, that gives them some time to review the documents, but once they get processing, I don't feel like it's gonna take that long for them, but I think that is more just to give them some leeway.
Fair enough. Can I ask another question?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Under the six items identified as how you can use the funds, has there been any discussion on item 5A, particularly to, and I'll just read it, expenditures related to the provision of grants to small businesses to reimburse the costs of business interruption caused by required closures?
Yes, so that is something else that we are looking at. We, the challenge that comes up with it is the amount of staff time and resources it would take to get the grant process started, get the applications in, and the sheer staff time that we didn't feel would be viable. Now, with that being said, I spoke with Alicia today, Katie and I did, at our normal COVID meeting with GSI, and she was inquiring with all the cities to see if they wanted to have those dollars put into a bucket, if you will, and have GSI kind of handle the grant process, which is an option that we're looking at. Typically, the grants are around $15,000 per business, from what we've heard on, on average, when that happens. The, the concern that I brought up to Alicia with GSI was that I would want to make sure that they were separated buckets, meaning that whatever dollars that we put into it from the city's dollars, that of this $330,000, would only go to our businesses within our community, because initially, she was talking about all of the cities putting it into a bucket, and allocating the dollars kind of in general, but I told her that wouldn't make sense to not utilize those dollars for our businesses. So, it is something we're gonna have further discussions about, and, and this is a small, the items we're talking about tonight is a very small amount out of that whole dollar amount.
Yeah, I would add number five, too, the, what, talking with Commerce, what I've heard in some discussions with the finance directors, when we read that, it really throws too much emphasis on expenses associated with the provision, and even expenses related to the provision of grants, and it makes us feel like it's more support, the grant money actually comes from another pot. So, I think we're all, we're watching what other cities are doing, and how, how they interpret this section in number five.
So, to clarify, still, during the webinar that RJ and I participated in, we specifically asked the question, could we use these dollars to supply local businesses expenditures related to COVID, or loss of revenue associated with COVID? And they were very hesitant to say yes, they didn't say yes. So, they said there'd be more clarifying information, I think, as this goes on, RJ mentions that we have a meeting with the other city managers and finance directors, and we're, we're learning together, but it would be challenging for us to manage, as Mayor Brickner said, our conversation with GSI, if they wanted to put a program together, we could be part of the program and identify those dollars from the relaxed standards we like, something like that. But I think, at this point, there's still some ambiguity as to whether or not we can use them direct, as a direct contribution to our local businesses.
So, it's not off the table by any means, we're still looking at it, but we thought this was a more immediate need, seeing that the businesses are now able to be open.
Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilmember Langford.
Thank you. Can you expound just a little bit on the selection that would be used for the businesses? We have everything from some pretty large businesses, right on down to a single proprietorship that is considered a small business. Who's gonna get first dubs on this? Is it gonna be a Yokes, or, you know, Safeway?
So, in essence, it would be for businesses that had not been able to be open during this process, during COVID, so that would eliminate, like, the grocery stores, also knowing that they're larger chains, if you will. So, we're focusing on the smaller businesses that hadn't been open within our community, or that were barely able to be open within our community, also keeping in mind ones that aren't big corporate groups like Starbucks, but more, more the franchise and privately owned. And we, we were gonna, this, at the end of this week, myself, along with a couple staff members, are gonna go around with a flyer, with the Q and A that you guys got, along with the information about the supplies being available, the dates of pickup, we have a time range where they would come to the PD, they would get their supplies, they would sign off on it for our, for our reporting purposes, and provide us with the information, and then if we have more or see more of a need, we would look at that at a, at a further date. But the objective was to keep it at about 20 employees or less within our community, or that they would get no more than enough for 20 employees.
Mayor, I was also gonna let the council know, Jen has started looking for these supplies, their masks, hand sanitizers, cleaning products and gloves, it's tough, I'll tell you, she's doing a lot of orders for as much product as she can get. We, our concern is that, are we gonna be able to get enough product to meet the needs of our community? So, we're working really hard to round up those supplies. There are resources that we can tap into that aren't available to the general public, but the quantity of supply is gonna be a challenge, so we continue to work on that.
If I may continue, I'd be happy to yield to anybody else that wants to ask a question first. All right. A point of just thought, I concur that you're probably having a really hard time locating the equipment. Secondly, I would assume that we're probably not having much luck having found stuff made in USA. So.
Actually, every, everything that we've found so far is made in the US.
I would like to congratulate you, I appreciate that a whole lot. Has anyone given thought to the fact, instead of dealing in pieces of articles such as individual PPEs, that we allow the businesses to do their business, they can locate what they're looking for, and bring us the receipt, an actual invoice that's marked paid, that they could bring to us, and we could allocate a certain amount of funds back to them, that would keep us from having to dabble in each individual article?
I'll let RJ speak a little bit to that, but I imagine the, that would fall under more of the grant side of things.
So, we've explored it, I think, one of the, I think where we got was how the cash flow was gonna work, now that is such an issue, but if a business returns into a receipt, we have trouble verifying if they're gonna use it for their needs to open, or their potential could be, we don't have control of the inventory at that point, so they could return a receipt for stuff that they bought back in March, but who's, who's to say they didn't turn around and sell somewhere else? So, we have a little bit of a control issue, but then it's the return receipt, then it's meaning, we would have to pay them, and then seek reimbursement back from Commerce, so it got a little more complicated on the transactional details there, too, with the result of that, we don't have control of what they're buying.
I appreciate that, sir, and not to be argumentative, just an ulterior point of view, is that we have no control over what we give them. Once we hand it to them, it's out of our hands, we don't know if they're gonna use it for their personal use, give it to their buddies next door. use it for their personal use, give it to their buddies next door, resell, whatever. So it just seems to me, sir, that we're dealing more heavily into an area where we have to go shopping, we have to maintain distribution, okay? And we're just doing things that are very staff labor related as opposed simply saying, from this date, bring me a signed invoice from whatever date you choose, and I reimburse you cash, okay? It's what we got already because we're going to send an invoice into the granting agency. We're not going to send anything else in, so they would give us what we would return. It's just a thought. I'm sure y'all have already discussed this and decided what's best for the city.
And I had, I had thought about that piece, too, Councilmember Langford. I think the other challenge that comes into place is our abilities to buy in bulk at a lot cheaper rate than they ever could to make the dollar go that much further. I'll give you an example. We were able to get one gallon containers of hand sanitizer for $24. And if you look online anywhere for a gallon of hand sanitizer, you're going to pay upwards of $60 to $85. So it helps spread those dollars a little bit further, longer term.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
I just have one last comment. I would really be in favor of 5A to help our small businesses that have been shut down.
Yeah, I think it's definitely something we're looking at and having a deeper dive conversations with to see how we can go about doing that in the most efficient way possible. So they're, even based off the, just to give you guys an idea, even based off our expenses in regards to our response to COVID, in regards to even purchasing some of these cleaning supplies, there's still adequate money available if we decide to go that route.
Dan, I got a question for RJ.
Go ahead.
Hey, RJ, curious regarding the reimbursable expenses, would staff hired in support of compiling reimbursement or establishing other grants on 5A be an acceptable expense in these terms?
Repeat again.
I'm just thinking out loud about hiring a staff member to be able to support compiling the reimbursements and/or establishing grant programs in support of 5A in this clause. Having somebody on staff, even under contract, even under, we'll say, hourly labor to support that.
I would say that that is a, that would be something that would qualify. It's very specific to COVID. You would write, so it's a short period of time within the grant, not budgeted. So go through the cat that they have, five items, and we determine that this is a necessary expense. And yes.
So the, yeah, the additional time energies, we'll say qualified time energies, it sounds like is within this qualified expense. Okay, thanks.
Good point, Dan.
Yeah, the only thing I would use caution on is for some, hiring somebody in a very short-term basis at an hourly rate, especially for grant purposes, and going through the recruiting process to find somebody that's even qualified to do that effectively.
I can bring forward a catalog of CPA firms with those qualifications. I'll follow up in an email.
Sure you can.
Mayor, I was going to mention one other thing. So we are kind of doing what I call round one, the, the week of June 8. If things go well or we get some feedback from businesses that they'd like something different or modification, this is kind of a, you know, our first step. And we can modify if there's a lot of demand for something different. This is, if we have enough money, we can do round two. I think 5A is another option. We'll know more in a few weeks what we can and can't do under 5A. So this could be considered a growing program, but it does need to end by October 30.
I'm sorry, it has to end by when?
October 30. Unless they extend it for some reason, but we don't expect that to happen.
So the businesses, have we had any contact with them as a city, asking the question, what can we do to help you?
Yes, we have. I've been going around to a lot of the businesses that were shut down during this time, and one of their biggest concerns consistently was trying to find the supplies needed to be able to open their doors effectively under the parameters of the health district. That was a very consistent theme overall, which is why I felt that this was an important first response with some of these dollars.
How quickly can the city get those needed supplies?
About, about a week, week and a half turnaround.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that this is a first step, too, because I think that I was thinking with the amount of money and everything originally, that this was what we were going to do. So I like hearing that there's a lot of different things and as there's more need expressed, we can respond to that. You guys can respond to that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. This, this is definitely not the one, the one-all way to spend these dollars. We just want to kind of highlight some of the initial findings and how we utilize them. So as far as the process goes, the flyers would be handed out at the end of this week, going business to business. And the date on which they would be able to come get those supplies would be June 8 through June 12, as you see in your, the flyer that was sent, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, that they would be able to send somebody to come get them. And it would be limited amount of what's being handed out during that time. And we've already coordinated with the police department and have identified a couple of staff members to help out to get it handed out during those hours, other than police staff, so they can focus on what they got to do.
That just raises a question about the police department. How did we settle on the PD to make the distribution?
That was about storage and space to be able to hold all the stuff. And the chief police immediately volunteered the police department as that site.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Kennedy, you're awfully quiet.
Everybody's asking questions I had in mind, so do it a good job.
All right, perfect. All right. Any other questions? Okay, not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Action item two.
Motion delegate, motion delegate authorities of the mayor to purchase supplies and services related to COVID-19 consisted with the relief fund for local government eligible cost test.
Second for the previous discussion?
Discussion?
What does it mean, local government eligible cost, and then the last word, test?
So there's a, in the guidelines, there is a test section to determine if the expense is, meets, meets the criteria, is actually called a test. Trying to find the page that's on the guideline.
It's got the blue header. It's got the five.
It's also section seven on page four of the guidelines as well.
So it's kind of, it's more of a, when they use the word test, it's more of a criteria test to make sure that they fit that criteria.
We can put it up on the screen.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Katie.
They're working on getting that up on the screen.
Page 32 of 37 on our.
Yeah. Other questions or comments while that's being pulled up? They're working on pulling it up.
So Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Yes, this is kind of just directed to you. And it may be a stupid question, but you'll have to forgive me. You're planning on going to business to business that hasn't been open. Who are you expecting to find there when the businesses haven't been opened?
Well, they're, almost all of them pretty much are allowed to be open at this point based on phase two. The only ones that wouldn't be able to be open during phase two, like the restaurants are very limited on their capacity, so they're now open. The salons are now able to be open. The only ones that aren't able to be open right now are the gyms. And I, I have points of contact for all of those, so I can reach them. But all the major businesses that we'd want to utilize or make this available to are now open in some facet and the ones that aren't, we have their contact info to reach out to them.
Sir, about how many businesses are you talking about? Do you have a kind of an idea?
I think we're starting out with supplies for about 150 businesses. And then if we find that we need more, then we'll, we'll take action. But most of the, most of the businesses along our main corridors on Liberty Lake Road, Appleway, Mission and Country Vista would be the ones that we'd be approaching.
Yeah, I'm with many on this. I'm glad to hear that there's going to be an opportunity to get the feedback from the businesses so we can change direction if necessary.
Absolutely.
I like what you're doing. Thank you.
The, it should be on your screen now.
It is, very much. Test.
Yeah, I know. The first time I saw that, I was thinking of tests themselves.
But it tells you that you get the, each jurisdiction has authority to make a recall under each circumstance, so that gives you some good leeway, I believe.
Yeah, we do have some leeway with it, for sure. It's just making sure that we're doing it the right way. It's very similar to the concerns that Spokane County has in relation to the $9.1 million that they get. While they, we wanted to make sure that all of the mayors had some input and feedback for those. At the end of the day, it was the three commissioners' responsibility to determine how those dollars were spent, because at the end of the day, they're on the hook if it's not spent appropriately. So we wanted to make sure that we're following this criteria very carefully. And, you know, I really do want to acknowledge that our staff and how, how hard they've been working to make sure we're doing things the right way.
It shows. Appreciate it much.
Other comments from the council? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? I have it. So next item would be citizen comments, but before we get to the citizen comments, I did want to give you guys an update on a phone call I just had a couple hours ago. I spoke with the chief of staff for the governor, and my conversation revolved around the letter that I'd sent to the governor's office at the end of last week. I think it was the end of last week. My weeks are getting mixed up. But it was in response to the letter I'd sent requesting that the city of Liberty Lake be able to be at phase three at the beginning of June, knowing that off the guidelines that it took to get to phase two, you're looking at a minimum of three to four weeks for us to be in phase two before, as a county, we would be considered for phase three. So the point of my conversation with the chief of staff for the governor's office today was to discuss with him his thoughts, kind of what the dialogue has been in relation to my letter. And I wanted to get you guys up to speed tonight, just so you were aware. So the conversation actually was, it went extremely well, surprisingly well. I was a little nervous how it would go at first, just knowing that they had very specific concerns about Spokane even going to phase two initially. And when I spoke with him, he said that he, he was happy and impressed with the letter because it started a dialogue that they already began at the state level about something they had not thought about, and that's looking at smaller cities that are within a larger county, specifically smaller cities like ours that have had very few cases within the city limits. He said that he thinks that we have a great argument, a great case for moving to phase three sooner than later, and that they were going to continue that dialogue today. But he, he said he wanted to congratulate our city because had that letter not been sent, they never even would have thought about looking at cities individually versus an entire county. And I asked him to really take into consideration the number of cases that we've had within the city compared to our population, how new our city was compared to the other cities within the county, along with the fact that we have a lot of newer businesses that aren't big corporate companies that, you know, they're, they're so new that they're just starting to get their feet planted on solid ground financially. And this going on, let alone much longer, could devastate a lot of those businesses. And he, he said that I have a great argument as to why we should be able to move to phase three sooner. And he was hopeful in the conversations they would be having on the state level throughout this week. And I told him, I said, you know, really look at our city as a, a city to try it out with, and then you can look at other small cities within large counties to make that an option as well. So it was, it was a very, very hopeful, good conversation. And I was happy to hear that it made enough noise that they had already started the dialogue after they saw the letter. So we're, we're moving in, in a positive direction, in the right direction, I feel.
Thank you for the update.
Yes, sir. With that being, sorry, Mr. Forrester?
That's excellent.
Oh, okay. With that being said, any citizen comments? We're at the second stage for citizen comments. Just as a reminder, you can go down to the bottom of your screen and hit the chat button and raise your hand if you would like to make a comment, and we will make sure that you are unmuted. if you would like to make a comment, and we will make sure that you are unmuted. Let me give this a second. All right, not seeing any. We will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all, and stay healthy, stay safe.
Bye.
See ya.